Upper left hand corner, you'll see the record. There we go.
Okay, I think we've got it. We'll start with the pledge to allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Okay, thanks everybody for joining. I see Tim is on with us now. So this is our first sort of live Google meet here with the community. Next month, we're hoping to actually be in person. So we're going to call the meeting to order at six oh four. We've got a new board member with us, Jackie Yonker Davis, just elected last night. I think John gave her a brief rundown. She's getting kind of a crash course here with her first meeting right off the bat. So the agenda is set. So we're going to go to the approval of the minutes, be resolved with the minutes of the May 12th. June person, June 8th meetings be approved. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? On favor? Opposed? Passes? Visitors requests. So we've, we've got visitors now. I don't know if anybody has given you anything Tara or if anybody has anything. We'll give it just a second.
I have not received anything.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna assume we don't have any requests then. We'll move on to approve warrants. Be resolved with the May 13th and May 27th warrants, internal claims, audit reports be approved. Can I have a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Treasures report be resolved, the treasures report for April and May 2020 be approved. You get a motion?
So moved.
A second? Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? Under Nicole.
Hi there. So I just have a couple of things to discuss today. Um, one of the things I wanted to let you guys know that's going on that we're dealing with here at the district that is going on across the state is Department of Labor fraud. Um, we've had about 30 people have um, had their social securities numbers used to file unemployment on their behalf and they have not done so. This is happening all over the state. I actually just got an email from another business administrator tonight asking if uh, Rachel Barnhart wanted to interview some school districts on what's happening and, and how this is happening. So it's happening all over. Um, I have been able to get a DOL fraud investigator on the case and they have a list of the employees' names. Um, the state troopers are also potentially going to be investigating some stuff. So um, I just wanted to let you all know that we have this handled as far as I, as far as I can. Um, the Department of Labor has all of the individuals and confirmed the ones that are fraudulent and um, there's nothing really else where we can do. We're just waiting. Unfortunately, some people did get debit cards. So it went as far as people actually received the cash for unemployment in the mail. So pretty scary for them. Um, I think, I think we're all in a good place now with it um, over the last couple of days. So um, going forward, I'm not sure what's going to happen, but at least they uh, DOL has their information and they can make it right from there on. So.
Nicole, did, did you mean that 30 people in our district had this happen?
Correct. Thirty employees had this filed be on their behalf and other, other school districts are having similar numbers. Very scary.
Wow.
Yeah.
Luckily, luckily, we were, I was able to get ahold of somebody um, through a colleague at the Department of Labor and they were able to take the information and um, it's settled as far as it can be at this point. So. Um, one of the things I wanted to talk about, um, as Matt was discussing, I had sent John and hopefully he brought it on to you. Um, the estimated surplus for year on, that's not a hundred percent yet. That's my estimate. I think it's a pretty good one at this point. Um, there are some other items to consider within that, like equity transfers that we have. There are certain um, increases and decreases to other equity accounts that are not reserves, like our encumbrances with our just uh, services or supplies that we have not received in the current year. So we'll get an invoice in next year. We just roll that over like as an extended budget, increase to our next year's budget. So um, so that's why those final numbers haven't come out. So what I'm asking you to approve tonight is up to a million dollars into our reserves. Um, there is no numbers in there. When I, when I do the adjustment before that, I will get final approval from the board on that. So I will say, here's my recommendation. We should fund X, Y, Z reserve. And then you can say yes or no.
So Nicole, right now that's, it's about eight hundred eighty thousand or s- something like that in reserves?
Yeah. Correct.
And then you would advise us and where, what reserves we would put that in for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. One of the things I'm going to recommend doing as John was talking, he was talking about the, the employee retirement contribution reserve.
Yeah.
That's the easiest reserve to draw from. So what my recommendation partially is going to be, um, I know we haven't discussed it yet, but um, you are approving a TRS reserve, which is a sub-reserve of the employee retirement contribution reserve. And then um, we can fund that to some degree. There's, there's a stipulation on the percentages you can fund that, like in the law. So it would only be up to a certain percent, ten percent of what your TRS bill. So our current TRS bill was uh, like eight hundred thousand dollars last year. So we'd be able to fund eighty thousand dollars on that. So.
We don't currently have that as a, as an ability to.
Not, yeah. The only thing that has to be done for that is you guys would have to approve a resolution for that. Um, but it is one of the easier ones to draw from. It just takes your um, approval. So those are the types of things looking into next year that we want to have access to. So.
So for our new business here, the seven, seven. What uh, it almost sounds like we duplicate the process. If you're saying in a month, you'll make your recommendation on, on where to move the surplus money. What's the difference between what we're approving here tonight and what you'll be asking us to approve next month?
What I ask you to prove next month will just be the actual amounts and it won't be next month because the audit for year end is June 30th. I still have to balance uh, all of the funds. Um, so that takes it like a couple of weeks. I'm already starting on that. We're already starting that process. Um, we, we don't get invoices in someone who will be end of July. So um, so we have to wait a little while to actually know what that final amount will be.
So tonight we're affirming our intention to move funds.
Yeah, correct. Yes. You're not actually moving anything. There will be no entries taking place, journal entries. That's how I would move them. So yes, there is nothing. I mean, we are at the point we haven't because the budget has uh, taken so long to get approved because of all the extension. Um, we haven't even rolled over the new year fiscal year. So those are all items on my list of things to do. So.
Okay, thank you.
Nicole, then would it be possible then to get a little more information on that ERS account, you know, before we talked about that again or?
Sure. I can send you out the um, in that reserves packet that I sent you. All the rules are in that. I can send that again.
Okay.
I think, because I think we're going to have to really start talking long and hard about that and what our future plans are. I mean, I know we don't know what the governor is going to deal with this thing yet. But we need to start planning out for what we're going to do, which reserve we want to use to fund and really estimate what we think is going to happen over the next three to five years. So having a long-term financial plan in place that you guys uh, give feedback on is going to be vital. So that's all forthcoming.
Thanks.
Yep. Um, and then the only other thing I wanted to do, I know the capital project is a source of um, stress for some. So I wanted to bring in our auditors potentially for an hour. Um, Tom Lawford, you saw there, they have another partner. Um, his name is Tom Huber. He does a lot of work with districts on just the education piece of what a project is and the financing of it. He discusses aid, how you earn aid, um, much more in-depth than I can do and give you. So I thought maybe it would be a good thing for you guys um, to engage in. If you want me to proceed with that, I can contact them. I'm sure there'd be a small amount carry uh, fee for that, but I thought, given everything that the air, I mean, I think it would be a good, it would be good to hear from them on that. So you can think about it and we know.
Yeah, I could ask you a question on that. So you know, there, the uh, maybe the point of stress that you're referring to is the additional three hundred thousand dollars, give or take, that we're going to need to move on. Now that that capital project uh, or that we will vote on to move. Um, what would the timeline be on that? Uh, Nicole, is that any, is there any urgency to that or are we going to be getting bids for quite a while and we can wait until after the end of the year when the governor tells us whatever he's going to tell us?
So Matt, um, we would have to make a decision on the reserves like in the, at the August meeting, but we're not going to know um, bidding or anything like that. We'll be in the design phase in the summer. But if we can, we can really um, put the pedal to the floor in terms of design and get a group throwing, we can have designs done. I think Rich said by September, October and get those into SED for approval and then start potentially having bids go out in March, which is perfect timing. Um, because that's when a lot of, a lot of items get bid and that's when you get the best dollar and value for everything. So, so we won't know that for a little while.
Are you saying it'll be August though, when we've got to make our decisions?
Yeah. So, yeah. I mean, the other, I, I mean, I don't want to say this. The other thing we could do if we are still um, wondering about what can happen is um, think about leaving more than four percent in fund balance, which I don't want to do. One bullet that John had mentioned. Um, I'm just worried that the governor, if we leave more than four percent in our uh, unappropriated fund balance, that he's going to say, well, you don't need our money. It's sitting right there. You already have enough funds. So now we're not going to give you state aid. So while we're lucky enough to never have to recognize our appropriated fund balance, we're going to have to do that this year. So if, especially if the twenty percent happens, the twenty percent that the governor has been talking about. So I think um, we could wait, leave that three hundred grand in there and then there are ways for us to expense it in the general fund over the capital fund to make that a whole, to make that two million dollars happen. You know what I mean? In this next fiscal year. So we have some options.
Okay. Sounds like we got a little bit of time anyway. Maybe we'll get a little more information from the governor between now and then.
Yeah, and I think so. One of the other things I wanted to touch on was the importance of understanding um, that though, I mean, we're in a, a crazy time in terms of the budget, the governor has never taken or reduced aid on building projects. Because he knows that's one of the best ways to get the um, the economy going again. That's one of the, one of the main ways um, that we get, and he's moving. So. So that's uh, something that the auditors can also talk to you about because they have forty years of experience with building aid and, and what has happened over the last twenty years. Even the GEA with, with the restoration, you remember when they took back roughly, I sent you that it was roughly nine hundred thousand dollars a year. A reduction, not a kickback, but a reduction in aid. So um, so that's one of the other things that they have more uh, knowledge and information on um, and just generally knowing. And because they work with so many school districts, they can speak a lot better to it than I can. So, so it's just a thought for you guys to think about for something that, you know, might be good having some. It might be further improved for, you know, for everybody. So that's all I got for each one there.
Okay, thanks Nicole. Any other questions for Nicole?
Oh, thank you.
Thanks Nicole.
Yep.
John, I think you're up.
Sure. Um, first off, I just, I want to thank the community. Obviously, we had a successful budget vote, capital project vote, proposition three, and the election of um, three new board members. So I want to thank the community for supporting us, supporting our schools, supporting our work and the district. Um, it is exciting times for OA. There's a lot of work uh, ahead for us. But um, it's, it's good to be in Oakfield, Alabama right now. So I just want to thank the community for their support last night. Um, the vote showed it. Uh, a couple of kudos and shout-outs. Um, obviously, today was actually the official end of our school year. I want to thank Tara and Stacy and Lee in district office. This year's um, budget vote was um, very chaotic. It was crazy. It was time-consuming. It was something that we didn't anticipate. And for Tara and the district office staff to create our absentee ballots, to stuff them, to label them, to create um, the return envelopes, to mail those out was just an enormous task. And these ladies did not balk once. Um, they put their nose to the grindstone and just got the work done. So I just, I can't applaud um, Tara and the ladies enough in district office. And we even had some, you know, other people help stuff envelopes. So you know, kudos, kudos to the ladies in district office. They really, they really came through. I want to also thank Nicole and Jordan. This capital project, um, you know, votes and setting all of this up financially and uh, having our building condition survey, this was a year in the making. And you know, unfortunately, we were supposed to vote on this in March and obviously it was delayed until yesterday. But just their extensive work um, and the financing of it all, um, they've, they've really um, you know, dotted their i's and crossed their t's. And I have to give them kudos uh, for their work as well. Um, I'm looking forward to graduation on Saturday. I want to thank uh, Heather in the main office over at the middle high school and the administration for I, for I know what's going to be a great event. We've had uh, graduation meetings probably now for the last two months in preparation for this. Um, you know, I have to give kudos to Heather because um, she even has a binder for me to make sure I don't make any mistakes come Saturday. She's got a binder for Matt. And um, she's, I think she's still working here um, to make sure that Saturday's event goes off without a hitch. So you know, kudos to the administrators um, for really creating um, something unique. And you know, I have concern that our stakes are and our standards are so high that um, next year's class is going to want the same thing. So um, but you know, kudos to Heather and the administrative team for um, putting together this, this graduation. And I've been a part of it and I can't, I can't wait for Saturday. Um, obviously, the community voted in uh, Jackie Davis to the board and I wanted to welcome her and congratulate her. Um, she was thrown into tonight's board meeting. So congratulations. And then we will also welcome uh, Pete Ziliff and Dan Groff uh, at the board meeting in July at our reorg meeting. And so um, welcome. I, I'm excited for our board. I'm excited for our team moving forward into next year. Again, there's a lot of work that needs to get done, but I think um, we are, we are, we're going to be a great team. As I mentioned, today was really the official end of the school year. Um, and if, you know, I can say this without uh, getting, getting upset. Uh, I have to thank, first of all, the teachers. Um, no one anticipated that any district, that education would, would look like this um, last September. And if you told me that this is how it was going to be, you know, I, I would have laughed and said you were crazy. And OA did it. Um, we as a district um, were the role models for other districts. We came out on top. And the creativity, the innovative ways that our teachers reached our students, the platforms, um, the, the assignment platforms, just everything that the teachers did. Um, they, they plowed through it and came out on top. And I have to thank everybody um, on that teaching staff because this is, you know, they didn't sign up for this. Education should occur into the classroom. They should be face-to-face with their kids. And once again, this staff did not balk. They, they worked ten times as hard to make it work and, and they did. And I have to thank the teachers, the support staff, um, the cafeteria ladies, you know, there's an executive order out there that we have to continue to feed our community. These cafeteria ladies were here at six o'clock in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon, working five days a week to make sure that we had these grab and go breakfasts and lunches. And once again, I did not hear one complaint. Um, they did it with a smile on their face. They knew that we were in a crisis mode and they came out on top. You know, the bus drivers from delivering food to delivering supplies, bus drivers were busy delivering awards and um, meals that couldn't get here. I just have to thank them. The buildings and grounds crew, uh, the mechanics, the, the cleaners, the custodial workers, secretaries, everybody. Um, everybody stepped up to the plate and I am so proud to, to say that I work here. I have a lot of friends that are administrators and even superintendents. And to tell them what we did here was, was shocking. So I just have to thank everybody for uh, mustering through, you know, this time. And uh, we came out on top and, and I am so proud of, of everybody here. Um, I do want to mention to the board that I did schedule our reorg meeting for July 7th at 6:00 PM. Um, per school law, our reorg meeting needs to occur within the first week in July. And with the, you know, um, Fourth of July holiday, and I tried to keep it as a Tuesday meeting. I did schedule it for July 7th at 6:00 PM. So please let me know if um, that does not uh, fit your schedule. And lastly, I want to thank Chris Hackey. I know um, last year I thanked Jeff Hyde and, and you, you came back and, and filled in. Thank you, Jeff. But I also want to thank Chris um, for your service here on the board. We have a token of appreciation which hasn't come in yet. But I just want to thank you um, in working with you the last year and a half. Um, you've been a great board member and uh, I know the board and, and myself appreciate your service. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for both of you.
So um, like I said, kudos to this district for wrapping up this school year. And we'll have one final finale come Saturday and then it'll be back to work next Monday. And I want to let the board know that we will be putting together a reopening task force in, in a few weeks. We'll reach out to parents and students and teachers and you know, board members can sit on that. And we'll await the guidance. And no matter what is going to occur in the fall, we will be ready. Um, I promise you that. And uh, um, that will be our mission over this summer, whether we turn back in September or not. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thanks John. Any questions for John?
No.
We'll move on to consent agenda. Um, I should have mentioned at the start, Jackie is abstaining from these votes. Uh, she just got to see this agenda for the first time this morning. So um, she's reviewing everything, but uh, it's standing from all votes, just so everybody knows. Um, on new business, be resolved uh, that item seven two through seven seven be approved via consent agenda. Included in that is CS replacements, our budget uh, results, our bond resolution, property tax report card, budget transfer and reserve funding. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Uh, seven point eight surplus books be resolved, detached listing of books for disposal be approved. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Is it, I always have a question. Um, is it possible that in her very detailed and wonderfully complete listing, that the librarian could include the reasons for discarding the books? It would seem like just one more column she could add to her form. She gave reasons for discarding them?
I think she did Lauren at the top of the, then when she gave us the letter, it said like there was a, um, all sorts of reasons why, overuse, but they didn't, she didn't.
For each book, I didn't understand. So I would have been curious to know which ones she thought were no longer appropriate. That was my major curiosity. Um, I just would have liked that information.
Sure.
Yes, we can, we can do that for you in the future. Um, you know, Nancy has served in this capacity for many years. I, I, I do understand the concern of the board with past uh, recommendations to weed out books. Um, so we did make Nancy uh, you know, go through those and provide you a purpose, purpose for those. Um, I did.
She did a very complete job, you know, very, very good job. I was just curious about it.
Yes, we can review in, in the future. Um, you know.
Do you have a report from the library system? I don't know if next to each book, unless she hand writes it in there, that she would be able to, to delineate what those are. So that's all I'm saying. I think because it's from the library system, I don't know if there would be a way.
I, I believe that um, we can to the, you know, to the best of our ability. I mean, I know when a book is listed there and it's from, you know, nineteen thirty-nine, okay, that's, that's outdated. But you know, like Lorna said, if there's, if there's a couple of books that were probably appropriate, you know, maybe five to 10 years ago that aren't now, I can see, you know, wanting to know um, the reason for it. Um, but again, you know, if they're, if they're damaged beyond belief, food spillage, yeah, she can, she can indicate those. Um, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, what's uh, what's going to happen to the books that are being disposed of?
Um, we will have them off to the side. We will offer them up to um, our staff here. Um, at this point, the Hapston Library, I believe, is still closed. So um, you know, I think Nancy does have a couple um, places that she can outs- outsource them. But a lot of these are in such bad condition and old that honestly, it's tough to get rid of. So we'll, we'll offer it up to the teachers if they want them for their classrooms, like we did um, with the last weeding. And uh, probably end up just discarding them or donating them um, to, you know, the local, local areas if, if they want them.
Could they be offered to the kids who come to pick up lunches?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that's one of the plans for the ones that are in good condition, Lorna, is to offer them with the lunches.
That's a really good idea, especially if the library is closed.
So the timeline for Tim is before the start of the next school year. She would like to have these out of the, out of her room.
That is correct.
Any other?
Yeah, I got another question with the books. Um, how much money do we have or how much money do we uh, have allotted for purchasing new books for the library?
Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe down at the elementary, it's, it's um, it's about thirty-five hundred dollars.
So um, for the next fiscal year, Tim, we have typically around fifty-five hundred plus Nancy has uh, her, has a line up for her regular supplies of two hundred and fifty. Um, we have asked her this year, based on not knowing what's happening with the governor's budget, um, to scale that down a little. We do get aided on books. So that aid she can spend in full, which is approximately twenty-five hundred dollars. And then she is, and we asked her to basically cut her budget a thousand bucks this year. So she has forty-five hundred to spend, or four, between four and forty-five hundred. I can't remember exactly.
Which, which, and for my vantage point, I think she got rid of a hundred and fifty-two books, if I, if I'm not mistaken. And when you look at those books, like I know we all lament uh, the ninety-two Lions, uh, but they might be a little bit out of date or like the Vikings team in the past. I, I, I think she'll, with that amount of money, she should be able to really bring back more than a hundred and fifty-two books, I, I would have to say. So there's not going to be a shortage of books in the library that I'm seeing with a forty-five hundred dollar budget.
Yeah, correct. You know, just, just like, you know, websites and the technology is changing daily, you know, so are the books, so are the periodicals, so are the resources for the kids. Um, and uh, you know, so we need to, we'd like to, to keep our libraries up to date. And that really is the purpose of the weeding process, obviously. You know, things are changing dramatically and certainly down at the elementary, we want to get you know, books in kids' hands. Um, certainly, it's a little different up here where a lot of it is, you know, through technology and um, you know, tablets and, you know, all that other stuff. But yeah, it's, it's to replenish and to freshen up and to update, you know, the books down at the elementary school. Absolutely.
We're not letting her get rid of the ninety-eight bills, right Justin? We're going to.
Oh dear God, I hope not. I, I, any, any old answer there for about fifteen years, I'm okay with.
Not till they come out. The kids, the kids need to learn about it.
They do need to learn about that era. They did win. They used to win, man.
Any other questions or discussion on that?
Yeah, um, just, just for one more clarification on it. Are the librarians the one who chooses the new books?
Yes.
Or is it, is there a committee?
Um, I believe Nancy through. I believe Nancy, through the, you know, the, the school library system, we take part in the GVEP school library system. So the librarians talk about, you know, the books that, you know, are awarded, you know, you know, the Newberry Awards and what books you should have at the elementary level, per grade level, per lexile. I do believe she works with Lynn and Lynn, you know, authorizes that. So she works with, you know, other librarians through the SLS in, in the GVEP region to pick those books.
Maybe who replaced the ones that were so well loved? They got loved to death.
Yeah.
Yeah, better put Bonicula back on the shelf or I'm going to, I'm going to cause an uproar here. It's a good book.
All right, all right. Thank you very much.
Sure. Any other questions? Okay, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor of the disposal as was written? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Staying.
Communications. So we've got the one communication there from the Upstate Institute. Is there anything about that, John, we want to?
Um, it's, it's, I don't honestly think it's, it's necessary to belong to that. You know, there is a fee to be a part of their newsletters and, you know, the information that's on the flyer. We belong to NISBA. I receive enough information. It was just something I wanted to throw your way. I don't actually know if we, I don't believe that we have paid for that service. And I don't find it moving forward that it's necessary. But I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention if you were interested in it. You know, that could be just a quick discussion. And, you know, if, if you're interested, we can, we can do it. If not, I don't see a need, but I figured I'd bring it to your attention.
Okay. Discussion roundtable. I don't think anything was submitted there. Subcommittee reports, HACSS and scholarship. I met with Chad and Matt on that last week. And we decided on recipients for that scholarship. Under SOAR there, I see you've got a possible meeting in July. Are you having some conversations with Ned on that, John?
Yes, we haven't set a date. I did talk to Ned. There's some minor things that occurred this past year that we just want to tighten up. Some of the, the teams were just looking at numbers and the number of athletes. And, you know, nothing major, but we just want to kind of clarify some things. Obviously, Elba has a new athletic director that's obviously full time on board. And we just want to sit down and make sure moving forward that we're offering up the kids, you know, these combined teams and, and want to make sure that continues. But this, you know, just a couple, couple of things we just want to clarify and, and, you know, make sure we're all set moving into hopefully what is a fall sports season.
Okay.
Matt, sorry to interrupt. John, is there athletic director, a member of their teaching staff or are they an administrator there at Elba?
I, I can't answer that for you. I really don't know. My first guess would be that he's part of the teaching, but I, I don't know.
I'm pretty sure he's a teacher over there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think he is too. We met him last year. He came to that meeting, right, John, last?
Yes, yeah, he was kind of, you know, shadowing Karen at the time before she retired.
Yeah, I don't remember. I, I just can't recall.
So last year, we had the community meeting regarding SOAR, John, prior to our meeting with Elba. I think that was a really good meeting for us to close the gap of communication of, you know, what, what SOAR does for these two schools. It's going to be more difficult with these sort of distancing standards. I, I think it'd be a good idea, whether we did that virtual or we got together. Let's try to schedule that if we could, a couple of weeks ahead of meeting with Elba. Remember last year, there was discussion also about wanting to bring the kids together for homecoming. There was a parent here that sort of wanted to poll the students and see what the students wanted. This, of course, is a bad year with the distancing things to be bringing two student bodies together. But that's something maybe that could be discussed at that meeting.
Sure, yeah, we, Ned and I and the athletic directors haven't put together officially a formal date to meet. Once we do that, I'll, I'll reach out to you and, and Justin. And yeah, we can set a, an OA SOAR meeting for just our community, like we did last year to do that. Absolutely.
Okay.
It might be curious, Matt. I mean, if Mr. Peterson was saying that a lot of kids were asking to go to dances over in Elba. You know, I mean, I, it might be a curious notion there to see what, if there's more interest in perhaps having a joint homecoming. I, I don't know.
I bet in that community meeting, there'd be as much discussion about those types of things as there will be about the actual athletics, bringing these student bodies together.
Sure.
I think it would be important to actually take a, a poll, even if it's a unofficial poll, so that the loudest voices don't carry the most weight. There may be more numbers. My impression was, and I could be wrong, that the kids each wanted their own homecoming. So I don't know that that's still true. But again, it might be good to poll them somehow as opposed to just letting the loudest voices carry the day.
Yeah, so you're right about that. That was, that's, we, so we took this up last fall and that was as far as we got. I worked with John and Matt to see if they'd be okay with that. And a parent wanted to do just that because, you know, we were hearing conflicting things. And we want to do what the students want. We don't want to seem like adults that are making decisions for the students.
Right.
So, yeah, hopefully that can lead the way for us. I don't think there's any other committee meetings. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, we're on the personnel. Be resolved that items 10-2 through 10-9 be approved via consent agenda. Included in that is student teachers, extracurricular appointments, an MOA leave of absence, another leave of absence, a resignation. Two dual agreements. Kind of a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passing. 10-10 consent agenda. Be resolved that items 10-11 through 10-17 be approved via consent agenda. Included in that are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 10-year appointments. And I believe a few of them are on the call here with us. Have a motion for that?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Congratulations to that group of seven.
Yes, congratulations. Thanks, guys.
Congratulations. We can't recognize you in person, but congratulations.
We know where you are.
I've got a cake over here for you.
Yeah, all right. 10-18 managerial confidential contract. Be resolved that contracts with the managerial confidential employees be approved as written.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
No.
One opposition. Passes. Business administrator's contract. Be resolved that the contract of the business administrator be approved as written. Have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Superintendent's contract. Be resolved that the contract of the superintendent be approved as written. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. OATA contract. Be resolved that the new three-year OATA contract be approved. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passes. No executive session tonight? We're on to closing remarks. Justin, do you have any closing remarks?
No, I just want to thank all the teachers. It, it's so hard. It's hard to do what you're doing, take care of your family and keep it all together. I really do appreciate what you've done for, for my four, soon to be five kids in that, in both of those schools. And I, I just want to say thank you and really enjoy your summer. You really deserve it, guys. So, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Justin. Lorna?
I'm going to say the same thing. Thank you to all the OA staff from the groundskeepers on up, the superintendent and everybody in between. And especially the teachers, because it's really hard to teach online for a lot of people. So thank you so much for doing that.
Thanks, Lorna.
No, I just want to echo same. I think the administration staff, our entire staff and everyone involved at the school has done a fantastic job. So kudos to everybody.
Thanks, Tim. Jeff?
Yeah, same. Thank you to everybody for, you know, obviously, like John had said earlier, nobody was expecting this. I think everybody, you know, pulled it together, did the best that they could. I look forward to seeing everybody in the building in the fall. And good luck to the new board members. And thanks for asking me back for a couple of months and have a good summer.
Thank you.
Thanks for helping us. We still have your phone number.
Yeah.
And we'll be calling.
No problem, no problem.
Jackie, do you have anything you want to say?
I, thanks to everybody, administration, faculty, all the teachers, every, everybody here. Amazing with the kids. Everybody's done this, this impeccable job of trying to get through this. And I'm excited to be a part of this. I'm, I'm really happy and excited for this new endeavor and work with this great district and community. And I'm really excited. So thank you all.
Great, thanks for coming.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thanks, Jack. Thank you.
Yeah, so for me, I'll do, of course, congratulations to the students that have graduated on Saturday. We'll cross our fingers on the weather. Teachers and the administrators, everybody that made this end of school year come together. Thank you for that. And like Jeff said, let's get the kids back in school this fall. I think it's what we all want. I hope that's what we've got coming. Thank you to Jeff and thank you to Chris for your three years with us. And I'll let you go last, Chris.
Okay. Yeah, March certainly did come in like a lion and didn't stop this year. But, you know, I, I think our district did a great job from top to bottom of just railing together and really being a team through this. You know, I was proud to see that. You know, thank, thank you for everyone who helped me out as a board member the last few years. You know, ladies in the office with gentle reminders and, you know, questions and things of that nature. You know, to the people who voted for me, thank you. Hopefully, we were able to represent your interests well during that time. I, I truly think that our district is in a better place today than it was three years ago. And I, I think that's going to continue to improve, especially with people that are on this board. You know, working with John, working with the administrators and teachers. Just move us forward and Lord willing, get us back to normal real soon.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Well, I, I have a question. We're not going into executive session?
No, we don't have an executive session tonight.
Okay, well, I, I thought we needed to follow through on some subject that we talked about at the last board meeting. And that Mr. Fiskus did some research on it.
Okay, we can, we'll go ahead and do that while we get a.
I thought I was going to be included.
Okay, be resolved, Board of Education enters executive session at 6:46. We get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we'll go into executive session. I guess we'll need to get everybody logged off of the call here, John.
I will send out a new Google Meet just to the board members. So make sure you, make sure you check your email.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll stop the recording, guys.
Thanks, Rob.